Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Pecosin Planning Commission for Monday, April 18th. And at this time, I'm going to ask the Vice Chair, Bill Travis, to offer the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Please stand. Join me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to go about the city's business. We ask for your counsel and guidance as we go about making some potentially important decisions. In these very difficult times, we ask you to look down on your sons and daughters that have been suffering from some very severe national disasters over the last week. As always, we ask that you watch over our sons and daughters serving in many difficult places and very foreign lands. And last year, I'd like to also add our emergency responders who have had some very difficult times. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Let your allegiance be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Bill. The first item that we have is the approval of the minutes for the regular session, March 21st, 2016. Do I have any corrections, additions, or anything we need to do on that before we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to recommend one slight change on page six of the minutes and the communications and correspondence. The third sentence talks about the conditional permit would be the forthcoming May meeting, and I believe that would be the April meeting. I'd like to make that correction. Other than that, I would move that we accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mrs. Denixson?
Aye.
Mr. Garden?
Stayed.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
And Chairman McShriver?
Aye.
Chairman McShriver, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the audience for visitors. And at this time, anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission on an item other than the public hearing item is welcome to do so. All right. Since no one seems to have anything they want to come forward with, we will go ahead and close the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearing item. This is a request by Bradford W. Drummond, applicant and Tag Time LLC business owner and SGC Withcreek LLC property owner for a conditional use permit to operate Escape Room Games in a storefront located at 475 Withcreek Road in the Withcreek Shopping Center, identified as tax map parcel number 27-01-00-0107-A, zoned B2 business. And I think Kevin is going to make the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Planning Commission. Processed conditional use permits, kind of a dime a dozen, it seems, over the course of my time here. And this is truly a unique use, something that we haven't seen before, something the peninsula hasn't seen before. And this is a request by Mr. Drummond. You may know him from Tag Time, Laser Tag. But he's requested to open up an escape room use in a vacant storefront in Withcreek Plaza located at 475 Withcreek Road. The property is at our prominent intersection here in the city. It has frontage on both Victory and on Withcreek Road. It's on that northwest quadrant of the intersection. The shopping center itself is about 49,000 square feet, is anchored by the Taylor's Duett Center hardware store. As well, there's a miscellaneous mix of restaurants, other retail, some salons are in that shopping center as well. The property is zoned B2, so it's zoned for commercial use. This would be a commercial use. However, in our B2 district, we as staff couldn't find a comfortable home for it within our permitted uses. We have a slew of specific permitted uses in the B2 district. However, like I said, we just couldn't find a comfortable fit. Is it close to a bowling alley, which is permitted by right in the district? Yeah, there's some aspects that are kind of similar. Or is it more like an arcade, which requires a conditional use permit? So we're in a gray area, and that's why we've come to you this evening with this application. As I mentioned, it's at 475 Withcreek Road. The storefront previously housed the clothesline consignment, the children's consignment store. It actually occupied two spaces, the vacant spot now, which I believe is just a little over 2,000 square feet, and the James McRey Nationwide Insurance Agency, which is what this would be next to. Like I mentioned, this is not specifically permitted by the zoning ordinance. So in accordance with Article 1, Section 18, we are here this evening to consider it because the uses that are not specifically permitted by right can be considered by the Planning Commission and City Council to deem their appropriateness within the district. So you're probably asking yourself what an escape room is. This is a new phenomenon. It's really taken off within the last 12 to 24 months across the country. They're actually very popular abroad, too, particularly in Eastern Europe. But essentially, it's a physical adventure game, which allows a group, in this case, six to eight people, to be locked, if you will, in a room in which they are given a certain time limit, usually an hour, to solve a series of puzzles, riddles, and other clues to assist in their escape from said room. They're used primarily for team building exercises and are really popular with the 18 to 35 demographic and really beyond. A lot of older adults enjoy these as well. This particular escape room would consist of four total rooms. Generally, each room has a different theme. I haven't discussed that with the applicant, but I would assume that each room would have some sort of puzzle that's different than the other room. And ultimately, this would allow Mr. Drummond to gain access to the 20-acre Watkins piece in which he has a conditional use permit for his Laser Tag business. In fact, from the rear door, you could walk, it's about 200 feet, to the property line of the Laser Tag field. And this would solve a big access issue for him and his business. We're all familiar with Withcreek Plaza. I took some pictures of the site just to refamiliarize everyone here. But as you can see, anchored by Taylor's Duett Center, El Rancho, and Snap Fitness. And in between Snap Fitness and the Nationwide Insurance Agency is where this use would be placed. This is from Pecosin Commons Shopping Center, which is where Food Line is. It's easy to forget that there are some retail on this side of Victory Boulevard. It's actually the same parcel. So you have Chins Cleaners there, formerly Boulevard Cleaners, Steel Magnolia Salon, and formerly the Briar Patch Tea Room, that are all under the same ownership group and all part of the same parcel. There's another angle of that coming from the alleyway. But this is the storefront that it will occupy. And this is just a little diagram to show you the rear of the storefront space and how it will be accessed onto the Watkins piece, which is highlighted in red there. And that's just a portion of it. It's a large parcel. However, patrons would be escorted out by Tag Time staff and onto the Laser Tag field there. This is the rear entrance door, and these are just a few pictures of the alleyway, loading way, whatever you'd like to call it, that would get you ultimately to the Watkins piece there. In conclusion here, like I said, this is a really unique use, not only to Pecosin, which isn't very difficult, but to the region. This would be the only use of this nature between Virginia Beach and Richmond. They've been popping up all over the place. It wouldn't surprise me if Williamsburg got one here shortly. But the purpose of the B2 district, in a nutshell, is to provide for a wide variety of commercial uses, industrial and business uses. And we as staff feel that this business has accomplished that purpose. This use would utilize a vacant existing storefront, and as such, any impacts would be minimal. It's operated in the past within the fabric of our Withcreek Road corridor fairly seamlessly with what one could argue would be a more intense retail use. And lastly, the utilization of the storefront would afford the business owner access to the Laser Tag field, which additionally would give us a unique use within our business district. So if you all recommend approval of this application to City Council, staff is recommending the following conditions, only five this time. The use must comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. The approved use permit shall be only for an escape room use and shall not be interpreted for any other use that cannot be reasonably categorized as such. If the proposed use changes to another form of family amusement, the permit shall be evaluated by the zoning administrator, who will determine if the use meets the intent of this use permit. Prior to any onsite expansion of the proposed use, the zoning administrator shall review the proposal to determine whether reconsideration of this permit is necessary by City Council. And keep in mind, the zoning administrator is the official of all the zoning, our land use ordinances, and it's actually the city manager here. So he would make those determinations. If at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, this permit shall become null and void. And lastly, City Council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation to you all this evening. I can certainly address any comments or concerns you may have or answer any questions.
Any questions before Kevin sits down?
Did you guys speculate, did you guys recommend any hours of operation?
We looked closely at some of the existing businesses on the corridor, particularly some that are open 24 hours, like 7-Eleven, for instance. Additionally, Farm Fresh, I believe, is open till 11:00 p.m. Food Line is open till 11:00 or 12:00 a.m. So with that being said, we figured there'd be no way that this business would exceed that window. So that would be just kind of an undue condition in this situation.
And in addition, this property does not lie adjacent to a residential area?
Oh.
So that was one of the...
And in addition to that, there's a business onsite, Snap 24/7 Fitness, which is open all throughout the night.
Good point. Well, Kevin will be here, so if we think of anything else, we can certainly hit him with it. All right, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to the public hearing for this matter. And if anyone would like to come forward and speak for against this particular item, we welcome your comments. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Good evening. Name is Bradford Drummond. Live at 201 Hudson's Farm Drive in Yorktown. But we are the new property owners of, I guess it's officially Zero Victory Boulevard is the official address for the 20 acres in the Big Woods. As you know, Tag Time Laser Tag's been trying to bring something into Pecosin for quite a while and been looking at different avenues to try to make this happen. We were working with CREs when they were working on their entrance there. And since that fell through, we were trying to figure out something that would work. And with this storefront, would work out very well with allowing us to have that as a front office for the Laser Tag business, as well as trying to fill the extra square footage with the escape rooms and utilize the back piece of property for Laser Tag. The picture that, can you bring up the one you had showing the trash cans? The corner of our property is actually on the, I guess, the far side of where the trash cans are. So for that one, the one you just had. So essentially, our entrance from where the door would is a straight shot across to, behind the trash cans, instead of going around the trash cans. So what we would be looking at doing is putting just a privacy fence. We've already been back there trying to clean up all the mess back there in the woods. But it's a straight shot back there. Essentially, what would happen for the Laser Tag aspect of it is people would come into the storefront. There would be hour sessions on the Laser Tag field, and they would be escorted to and from for their hour session. All the gear up of equipment and everything would be on the field, so the kids wouldn't be walking back and forth with Laser Tag guns and stuff like that. So all that would be on the property itself. One of the other big issues this solves is restrooms for us on the property, because that would be in the building. For the escape room aspect, like I said, we were looking at other uses to use that other square footage. The escape rooms, like Kevin said, are something that is new and growing quite a bit. There is one opening, I think, next month in Williamsburg. So they are growing quite a bit. If you're not familiar with them, essentially, they're a physical type of game, everything from different types of puzzles to riddles to stuff like that. The people are not locked in the room. Unfortunately, code won't let us lock a door if you put people in a room. So essentially, the door is just closed. But they have to find clues and figure a way to solve the puzzle to escape. Everything from kind of a CSI to kind of the game Clue. So that gives you an idea of what it's like. The hours were brought up. Primary business hours are evenings and weekends. Typically, what the escape rooms are finding out is late night, people tend to tear stuff up. And like the bachelor parties and stuff like that are not what they typically gear towards because they tend to damage equipment and stuff like that. So typically, the last session most of the escape rooms are running is nine o'clock. So that would finish at the 10 o'clock, you know, hour. So our long-term plan is still to look at a permanent entrance for the Laser Tag on the back property. So this, we are hoping, would be a temporary entrance for the Laser Tag. And, you know, for long-term, looking for another entrance for that if any other development happens in the area. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, feel free to add.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak about this? Sure, come on up. Give us your name and your address.
My name's Alan Moody, 2078 Brown's Neck Road. Through the process of coming up here over the last few months, I've met Mr. Drummond and had a chance to talk with him. I know y'all have had difficult decisions in the past. I'm hoping you see that this is not one of those. This seems like a slam dunk for Pecosin, would bring in business from outside, have them come into his business, spend money here in Pecosin, see what we're about, maybe even bring more development in, who knows? I just wanted to say that I support his conditional use permit, and I hope that y'all will send this on to the council with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right. With that said, we'll close the public hearing on this matter, and the Planning Commission will now take this under consideration. We have any comments or questions on this?
I wish to comment. As strange as it may seem, I have actually watched escape rooms on The Big Bang Theory. I thought they were pretty cool. Maybe you can get Sheldon to come down here and...
I think you've come up with a rather creative way of accessing your property, whether, you know, you hope it's a temporary thing, but I think it's creative. And I think it sounds like it would be something that would be of interest to not only our citizens here, but, as you say, would attract, hopefully, people from other areas to come and play. It sounds like, to me, kind of a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
I don't really have a problem with it.
I think it'll absolutely bring people in from York County and Newport News, and I am excited about it. I think it's a great idea.
I do, too. I like it.
I like to play it, too. The only question I had, though, is how many people play Laser Tag at one time?
Right now, we can play 50 at a time.
The only reason I mention this is because sometimes, if I go to eat at El Rancho, that parking lot's pretty full now. Is there any plan for overflow parking?
Well, right now, we run mobile. We do everything from backyard birthday parties to corporate events and stuff like that. So our mobile business, we will continue. We're planning kind of a scaled-down version of what we originally planned on the Watkins piece, just because of the access and everything like that. So what we're thinking now is with Battlefield size, 20 to 40 will probably be our max, because we're still running our mobile business.
I see.
I know some of that birthday party business and stuff will transition here. We have looked at, on the other side of the shopping center, there's some, I guess, adjacent to where Briar Patch was and stuff like that.
Does that parking lot's a little more open typically? Anyways, it's all a good thing. I just...
Typically, with Laser Tag, too, you're looking at families, so the vehicle count is not as bad as...
Hey, just matter of interest, how many employees do you anticipate to operate your business?
We're trying to fill out the escape room part of it. Typically, that's four to five at any given point in time. And then probably another two, one of those assisting with, you know, checking people in with Laser Tag, and two to three with the Laser Tag.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, congratulations. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for young people, and we need to be encouraging more entertainment. I just have a couple of, I guess, questions in terms of defining the boundary of the Battlefield.
Yes. Right now, our conditional use permit for the Watkins piece requires a bordered area, so we have to be away from the property line. The upland area on the Watkins piece is probably about 200 feet into the property. So essentially, we would come out of the back door of the shopping center, and we will have a pathway going back to where the Battlefield area is. So it's going to be far enough back. So the plan is, out of the hour session that we're going to be doing, about 15 minutes of that we're planning is just transit time with about a 45-minute actual playtime on the Battlefield. So none of that will be visible from the shopping center or, I guess, from Purdue's or any of the other.
And do you have any lighting at all, or is it all in the dark?
Typically, daylight. Everything we do right now is, we do tons of Saturday daytime-type events. Couple of the fields that are doing night stuff are using the LED rechargeable stuff, so they typically last three to four hours. So in the summertime, you're still looking at nine o'clock or so is when we would be shutting down the outdoor portion. And because you don't want a whole lot of light, but the LED solar lighting is just enough to kind of light your way type thing.
Okay. And I noticed that you would be escorting the participants, I guess, back through that back area. And it looks like from the map, you're actually going to be right behind El Rancho's restaurant a little bit?
Well, I guess the way it was drawn, it was showing having us going around the trash cans. But our plan is to actually go from the door of the shopping center straight out. So we're going, it's literally only right across where that little driveway goes back there. And one of the things that we were really concerned about was not having people individually walking back and forth. So we wanted to have a group assemble at the storefront, and then before they played, they would have employees take them out onto the field area and vice versa.
Yeah. And have you consulted with El Rancho's owners about the opportunity?
We haven't. No, we have not.
Okay. Might be something you might want to keep neighborly, you know, relations there, because I know it's quite a busy business.
Oh, I know, yes.
Yeah. We certainly don't want to jeopardize a current customer of the car.
Hopefully, we'll bring in plenty of business for them.
I bet you will.
And one more question. What is your marketing plan in terms of how you're going to promote the business?
Right now, we do the Kids Directory, which goes out to all of doctor's office, dentist's office, stuff like that. That's part of our current with Tag Time. So those will all be updated to have Tag Time and the escape room all with those. And those are south side as well. We know several people that drive to the south side quite a bit for escape rooms, and we've done it ourselves. So we're hoping that a lot of these escape room community, people that really enjoy escape rooms, will travel all over the place. We're hoping to draw people from outside areas to ours. So we're going to include the escape room portion in all the Kids Directory items that we're doing. We've already talked to charity about ribbon cuttings and doing press releases out to the state level as well for their entertainment guides and listing. Right now, Pecosin has a listing in the state entertainment directory or the state business directory, so we're going to be listing in that as well, as well as local markets.
Sure. And may I suggest companion marketing also with maybe some of the other tenants in the shopping center? You know, stop by El Rancho for a free burrito or something?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drummond, for answering our question. Okay, so now, we do have this on the table. Is anyone willing to make a motion to accept that we recommend?
How do we accept the request? It's a great idea.
Okay, second. All right, Vicki. Certainly. Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Ms. Denixson?
Aye.
Chairman McShriver?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. And we have recommended, and of course, we are just a recommending body, you will take this to City Council, I believe, on Monday evening. They'll decide ultimately whether they feel like it's a good thing or not. We did. We recommended it, and good luck. All right. So we had a couple of other items that were supposed to be on our agenda tonight, one of which was Amos Church had wanted to apply for a conditional use to expand the Educational Outreach Center, and that has been postponed. And I think Mr. Hogan subdivision variance request, that has been postponed at the applicant's request. Letters were sent to all regarding these postponements. So we look forward to seeing something maybe in a future meeting on those items. Now, unfinished business. We have comprehensive plan update discussion, which we had a work session tonight on that prior to this meeting. And I think that it will be necessary for us in this section to make a motion to amend, to add the item to vote on our applicants to our agenda. This is proper procedure, I believe. So we need to first make an amendment that we add the item to vote for our committee, which we have already, in our work session, we've certainly viewed this. But we have to vote that we accept those applicants for the comprehensive committee, Citizens Committee. So if we could first have the motion to amend our agenda tonight to include this vote.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Vicki. Certainly. Ms. Denixson?
Aye.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairman McShriver?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero. All right. So the next thing would be that we now have, we can amend, we have amended our agenda to ask for a motion to accept the Citizens Committee for the comprehensive plan, to review the comprehensive plan. And we would entertain a motion to accept these 12 applicants that we have viewed tonight. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Vicki?
Certainly.
All right, Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Ms. Denixson?
Aye.
And Chairman McShriver?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. And I believe that will go to City Council, that information to them on Monday or perhaps in a weekend. That will be transferred to them, so they will know our selections. Okay. All right. With that said, that kind of concludes what we have on our agenda tonight as far as public hearings and unfinished business. And I'm going to ask Debbie if there's anything that she would like to let us know about tonight in our communications and correspondence section.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. You did receive in your agenda package a memo, which basically outlines the actions that City Council has taken on each of the items that you considered at your last meeting. You were bombarded by Karen, which we certainly appreciate her efforts. She does a great job. But she introduced to you six public, excuse me, six code amendments, which were basically housekeeping measures that derived basically from state code changes that occurred in July of 2015. So we appreciate her getting our records in line with the state records. But the one thing I did want to point out, if you remember correctly, the price condi- But the one thing I did want to point out, if you remember correctly, the price conditional use permit, Kevin introduced that to you, and the Planning Commission recommended approval with the conditions that city staff had recommended. City Council did the same, if I remember correctly, but there was some discussion concerning the hours of operation. Kevin and I had quite a conversation on what, if there's a condition that we should place on there, to make sure that because of the unique location of this property, whether or not it made sense to limit them to more than just seven AM to nine PM. If you really think about this area of the city, it is unique. You have a church across the street, you have a parks and recreation facility next door and to the rear, you have a funeral home operating, of course, as a business, on the other side. So when you're starting to apply conditions, and I thought it was a very nice thought that you had tonight, Gus, I mean, not Gus, I'm sorry, anyway, the, I just lost my train of thought, the discussion at the City Council was, do we need to add, if this business is going to be placed there, can it blend in without interfering with the adjacent residential area, which is fairly small? And the reason why I point that out is, we have pockets of areas throughout the city where we have existing businesses operating adjacent to residential. And so when we're looking, going through the comprehensive plan and the land use maps, we want to be kind of conscientious of that, I think. I think it's a great opportunity for us to kind of think about whether or not, what kind of uses are appropriate in those areas, and do any, are there any changes needed to the land use designations of those properties? But that's all I had. We do have one conditional use permit that is scheduled for next month. I'm sure Kevin, he's always taken the lead on conditional use permits, which I sincerely appreciate, but it's for a storage unit on the piece of property on With Creek Road. As you're exiting the city, it would be on the west side of With Creek Road. It's been a cleared parcel for a number of years now, and the applicant or the property owner has submitted an application for some mini storage warehousing, along with some professional office building space. So we will process that to you next month. So with that said, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Debbie. Kevin?
Next month's going to be busy. The request that Debbie mentioned, as well as pause their amendment to their conditional use application to increase the amount of cats from fifty to seventy-five on their property, will go before you all, if nothing changes as of now. Additionally, the two requests that were postponed this evening, we anticipate both coming before you next month. So it's at least four public hearings, so that should be busy. But anyway, other than that, we continue to appreciate y'all's participation in the comp plan preliminary discussions. I know that can be tedious at times, but we're getting close to getting the ball rolling on this. So we thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Vicki, you have anything you need to remind us about? All right. Okay, we'll go down the roll here, Lee. Did you have any comments tonight?
Not at this time.
All right. Gus?
Nobody.
Jay?
When's next month be?
The third Monday in May.
Which is early.
May sixteenth.
Yeah. It's, I believe it is May sixteenth, because the first Monday in May is like the second, so it's early. May, May sixteenth?
May sixteenth, I thought it was May sixteenth.
Okay. Bill?
No, I have nothing, ma'am.
No, nothing to say? And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Thank you.
Good luck.
She was always coming down.